An enthusiastic crowd this morning and we appreciate each of you being here. And if we could rise and have our invocation and pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Dear Lord, during your holy season, we gather here for celebration and planning of the gifts provided to each of us. Through your will, the staff, administration, students, leaders, volunteers, each follow their path to make the community, the college, and ourselves better. Please inspire us this morning, give us guidance to prioritize for the good of our students and of our community. In your name I pray, amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and thank you again for being here. This is the third year of our three-year strategic plan and so I certainly appreciate even more so than most years, Dr. Crawford and Dr. Williams and the team's planning of this because it's kind of hard to not get excited about our next three-year plan, whatever is going to be included in it. And so, a few months ago when Dr. Williams and I sat down, we started to talk about things that could be, and goals and priorities, and then we had to take a step back and say, wait, let's put that on our next plan and let's look at what this plan says and see where we are. So, this morning, unlike a couple of years ago when we were really down and dirty into trying to create these priorities, we're going to spend the morning reviewing where we have, how we have achieved, what we've achieved. We are going to look at some very specific metrics that the team put together that's reflective of how we've gotten to where we've gotten through our strategic plan. And then the takeaway that I ask my colleagues on the board that we really want to do is give the team guidance when they're making their budget decisions this spring is where are we putting our money relative to our priorities? So, with that, I will turn it over to Angie. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cole. Good morning. Good morning, board members, chairman of president, college family. My name is Andrea Henning and I welcome you to the best board meeting of the year. We are here to discuss our strategic plan and the collaborative labs and we have a powerful productive two-hours plan. You can see on the whiteboard and in the displays, there are two hours devoted. Part one, we will hear from Dr. Sabrina Crawford and we will receive a kind of a progress overview of our strategic plan. And then as you're listening to each of the five strategic areas, board members, if you would select one area that you feel you would like to champion in 2020, so which area is calling your name? And within, you know, since there are five strategic areas, five board members, the math should work out perfectly. And if there are two or more of you who are really focused in on one strategic area, we have a way to decide that. We've planned a dance-off right here, okay? And if that doesn't work, then you'll just talk amongst yourselves to figure out where to go. All right, so, once we decide which board champion will go in each of the five areas, we will then in hour two deploy to these work groups. And we have, as you can see, champions already who have been working the plan. And each of the five work groups has a devoted team of champions in the various labs and as board members you will join up with them in hour two. And you'll see there are like one to three priorities in your specific focus area. We'll ask you to really dig deeply into those priorities, ask insightful questions, give us your wisdom, and then we'll ask you to hone in on one priority that you are most excited about championing as a board member for the coming year in 2020. And we'll have you join with those work groups, not monthly because we meet monthly, we'll have you join with them maybe every semester in March and in October to really help drive that specific priority. How does that sound?
Good.
All right, with that, I'll ask Dr. Sabrina Crawford to please walk us through that three-year strategic plan.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board.
Good morning, Dr. Williams, SPC champion rock stars. You know, this is always my favorite time of year because I go to talk about metrics and I get to talk about how we were doing as a college and really give you a nice broad overview of where our strategic plan has landed us. I want to spend just a couple of seconds and talk about the evolution of our strategic plan. You probably, some of you are aware, some of you are probably not aware, but we've never done a three-year strategic plan in the last 10 years. So this has been a learning curve for us and I think that at this point in time, those who have been working on the strategic plan finally have coalesced this into something that is easy to understand. It has very specific priorities and very specific metrics. We have our metrics that I'm sharing with you today, which are considered lab metrics or some people call them autopsy metrics, but they're for the prior year. And we've also started showing you ongoing monthly metrics to kind of keep you in progress as how we're proceeding through the current year. So I think that that's a really helpful distinction between the two. But I wanted to start on, you have this large brochure in front of you. This is the metric brochure and on the back of the page, there's a very beautiful graphic that kind of describes how our strategic plan affects the college, how we're thinking about what we're doing, and how everything that we do kind of falls into one of these types of buckets. So I'm going to start at the bottom. You can see there's two bottom layers. These are the foundations of SPC. The first one obviously being financial vitality, we need to have our resources in line and we have to have our employees engaged, retained, and with a good experience. And those two things really build the college for what it can be. And on top of that rests our three pillars, academic excellence, economic mobility, and community engagement. And everything that we do from the top, you can see, we do this through our community of care and through our equity lines. And so this kind of picture really depicts what we're doing, how we're doing, and how we're trying to serve our students and our community. So I'm going to walk you through a series of metrics that speaks to each one of these. I know that it speaks to them in here, but a very nice clear way to look at them is in the other smaller brochure, talks about each one of the priorities for each one of these five buckets, but I'm just going to spend time on this one. So, we're going to start with academic excellence. So our academic excellence area has three main priorities. Some of these metrics you will have seen, you'll have seen come before you and talked about before, they're not going to be anything new. Some of them are different, they're new, the ones that we really try to strive to figure out what would be the best way to describe this for you. So if we look at priority number one, which is enhancing the learning experience, you've been seeing this come monthly before you to talk about three different metrics. One of those is how our faculty engage with our students, and that's through the early alert system that we call Spark. And we've been doing a monthly kind of review of how we're doing every single month. This is last year versus our baseline year. You can kind of see how we evolved. And you'll see that it's in green, we do have a target of increasing that engagement by 10% and we are well on our way. Our second priority, which is down below that, speaks to closing the achievement gap. Now this is something that we just brought forward to you again last month, because again, if you look at it, you can scroll down just a little bit to priority two. Thank you. So this is talking about how our students are doing and their overall course success rates. You can see that every year, the first one, column all the way to the left, this is kind of where we began our discussions with the board many years ago, only sharing this information on improving our success rates year over year, and you can see that that remains green. And we started to break it down for you between our black students and our all minority students, our Hispanic students, you can see that the colors begin to change. And we're well aware that of all of our student groups, our black students are the ones that are in need of the most help, the most support, and most encouragement to improve those success rates. And that's why last month we brought forward some initiatives for you to consider as recommendations on how to do that. Our third priority has to do with maintaining student progression and attainment. Now these, we've talked to you about this all the time, but I don't think we've ever presented it in this way. So obviously, one of our key things that we have to do for our students is we need to get them enrolled and then we need to make sure that they're progressing through their program. And the end goal obviously is to achieve their degree. So there's a couple of things that I want to share with you here. The first one is our retention rate. So in order to keep our students, we do many different types of initiatives where we are trying to make sure our students are not falling off their path, that our students are maintaining their progress, and that they're working towards their completion rate. And you'll see that year over year, we're kind of pretty much at a, the same level year over year for the last couple. We do have a goal of 72%. We do have some groups, like our first-time in college students, that are at higher level than these, but overall, our students are progressing, they are re-being retained, and we have quite a few initiatives that if you join this group for academic excellence, they will talk to you a little bit about in your breakout groups. And then if you look at the next two metrics, I'm going to start with the middle one. This has to do with the number of degrees and certificates that we have every year. We set a goal when we first created our strategic plan to get to 8,200. And you'll see that that's actually depicted, 8,200 degrees to prosperity. We're trying to get there very, very hard. What we're noticing is that as our economy is improving, our students are taking longer to get through their programs, they are not walking across that stage as quickly, and the percentage of our students that are walking across the stage is not as high. So you see the red there and at the same time, our retention is still good, they're still with us, they're just taking longer to get across that stage. So that's something that we need to work on as a, as a group of champions, on how do we get our students to move across that stage a little quicker? If you scroll to the very bottom one, this is kind of a good way to look at it. So when we talk about completion rates, so completion rates are all over the board. We have IPeds completion rates, which everyone talks about, but that's for only first-time full-time students. Our number of first-time full-time students for us is this big, it doesn't tell our story. Then IPeds came up with another thing, which is called outcome measures, and it looks at first-time, first-time full-time, first-time part-time, all across the board. And again, that doesn't depict us because there are four separate little buckets. So SPC decided, you know what, we're going to do our own 150%, so three-year, that's the kind of the key, three years or 150% of the time completion rate, and track it for those students who enter the college first time in college with us. So you'll see that our first-time in college students started three years ago with an 18%, 150% completion rate, and we're already up to 24%. This is speaking to how we're working with our newer students. So although those degrees aren't coming across as quickly anymore, we are starting to see growth with our students who are first time. So there is some positive and some things that we still need to work on in here. We are speaking a lot about completion initiatives as well as you'll hear about a slew of retention initiatives.
Dr. Crawford? Yes. For the completion rate, this is only saying, these are the first-time full-time students who started a specific year and finished within three years.
Exactly.
If you go four years, five years, it may...
Oh, if we increase this out to another, another perspective that we look at is 200%, so that's a four-year completion rate, at that point, we're up in like the 40s.
Yeah, it goes up.
Yeah, it goes up even higher.
Isn't some of the performance funding next on finishing four years?
Yes.
Yes, and they, and they came out with last year, the idea of completing 100% of the time, which would be two years, which would just be disastrous obviously for all of the college system institutions.
Excuse me, but to your point, Trustee Bello, I know at the last meeting you asked about the state metrics versus what we're measuring, and that was something that, that we all sat down to try to see and we are not presenting that today because the state hasn't issued its next year, next metrics yet. So we don't know what we're going to be measured on, so a challenge that I issued to Todd Crawford was, well, let's, let's start to think about what we think they might be tracking and, and start looking forward at what they might be tracking and be sure that we know how to track it. And so that's kind of the foundation. So, just to know that we had that conversation, follow-up from...
And I have a meeting with the commissioner in January, he's meeting with all the presidents to fine-tune that information, so as soon as we get, we'll get it changed.
So any other questions on this first bucket of academic excellence? All right, we're going to look at economic mobility. So economic mobility, the first priority there is to expand access. And we have a goal where we're trying to develop new programs that are actually supporting our local economy, our local businesses, making sure that we have the right programs in our institution. And we pulled baseline data for 2017, 18, and things that you're going to see here is that in regards to our credit programs, which are the two columns on the left, we only had five new programs that year. But what we did do is we added 17 new transfer plans. So transfer plans are, plans, it's a general AA degree plan that includes all the prerequisites that would be required for a student to have to enter into the university or into our own baccalaureate programs. So we were very focused on that AA group of students because a general AA makes it very hard for a student to complete a bachelor's degree. They have to have an AA degree plus all of these prerequisites depending upon the field of study they want to pursue later in their life. So we created 17 new transfer plans, some of those were per fused, our partnership with USF, some of those were for our partnership with FAMU, and we're now just starting to work on our new partnership with UCF. In comparison, in 1819, we had 14 new credit programs. And this is in response to many of the conversations that the deans and the provosts are having with our industry partners. And some, for, for a good example, would be our data science AS degree program, brand new AS degree program, taking all courses that we already kind of had, repackaged, but actually now meeting a need that's out in the workforce. We only had five new transfer plans this past year, that's because we did obviously so much more the year before. And when you look at our non-credits, and these are our short-term programs for the workforce institute, again, you'll see that we're increasing our number of new programs. We have a long, long list, so if you join the economic mobility, Pat Renaud will have that information if you need it. And we also made several modifications to programs in order to make sure that they're meeting the values and the, and the skill sets that our employers are discussing. So you'll see the numbers are red, but I don't think it's a true red, it's just, that's a number count that we had to give you a color for. But I think what the, the overall picture here is it's showing you that the programs both from the non-credit side and the credit side are trying to be very responsive to our workforce needs. Our second priority is to drive enrollment growth. And this is information that you kind of see when we do the who's here every semester, who's coming, what are they doing, what, what, what group are they falling in? But we really started to break it down into how are we recruiting students and what are we recruiting them for? And this shows two years' worth of data, and so we have 2017 to 2018, and you'll see that the two areas that we are losing students right now are in our baccalaureate programs. And I kind of have a couple of reasons for that. One is we didn't just work on all those new transfer plans, so those are just coming online for this current year. And then the second thing is that students are actually getting jobs after their AS degree. The economy is so good right now that if you have an AS degree, or if you have an AA with the right prereqs, you can walk into the workforce and not need that baccalaureate degree. And if you look at the state data, it's showing that, that trend across all of the institutions. It doesn't mean that we're not trying, that doesn't mean that we don't need to do more to promote our own internal baccalaureate degree programs, which I know the deans are working on with the marketing plan right now, but it does show that there's a small reason why that happens to be the bucket.
Dr. Crawford? What, what would you say also with these fantastic transfer partnerships with Ignite and Fuse and Path and that, that many of those students are going to those institutions and...
I would say that we have, this speaks to another thing that I think our deans are just wrapping their, their arms around over the last nine months, is the fact that we promoted so much our university partnerships that we actually stopped promoting our own. Not stopped, not to the same level. We don't have, we don't have the dedicated advising staff, we don't have the dedicated meetings when we, when we have our career and academic community gatherings where we talk about, here's how you can transfer to the universities. We're not doing that, we were not doing that as well for our own baccalaureate programs, and that was definitely a place where we knew we needed to increase. The good news on this graph is that our AS degree program students, they had been lagging for the last several years. And this is the first year over year that we're actually seeing increase, which means students are recognizing the value again of that, that degree, which means they're going in larger numbers into that, that pattern. Our AA, you can understand why that would be, or they're not on here, and then our certificate programs. We know that a lot of students are looking for short-term changes so that they can increase their skill set and then can either get their promotion or move on to a new job, so those are all increasing. And then our last priority underneath economic mobility is that we're trying to make sure that we're having opportunities for students to experience programs that are within their career goals, and we talk about workforce, work-based learning experiences, one of those being internships. And several years ago, all of our AS degree programs tried to embed some form of a work-based learning, many of those are, are internship programs. And you'll see on the left-hand side that that nearly increased year over year for the last three years, how many students are engaging with these internship programs. At the same time, we're also noticing that students are saying to us a little bit about the fact that they're already working and that the internship program isn't as valuable for a working adult as it is for our younger students. So we're kind of balancing those two perspectives from our student body. And then the last one is our goal is the number of industry certifications that our students achieve. We work very hard by providing test preparation, free vouchers for students to take their industry certifications, we have testing centers for them, and this is attached to funding from the state, so every student who receives one of these gets, we receive funding back for, and it's, I think, Jeanette always talks about this at, during that time of year when we, we see the industry certification number. We have a target of 900, I think we're going to get there, I really feel very strongly that that's going to be a goal that we meet without an issue, but you can see the trend line year over year for the last three. Any questions on economic...
What's the timeline for the target? 2020?
Okay, so this is our third bucket, this is our pillar for community engagement. And community engagement, when you look at the priorities in your booklet, actually has a wide group of priorities. And you're going to notice that I only have one chart here. We've discovered that this is one area that though we talk about it, and though we do a lot, what we're want, what we're not doing is doing conscious, specific tracking for that. So when we talk about our partnerships, do we have partnerships? We have thousands of partnerships across this county, across Hlesborough County, and across the nation in fact, but we haven't figured out a way to actually track that information. And I think that the chart that I'm showing really speaks to our tracking need because we do have, year over, we have an office for civic engagement, this is student-focused, this is where students go out into the community, participate in community engagement activities, they're increasing, many of these are embedded within courses, and each one of these years, even though there's a lot of red on here, we have more courses now than we've ever had before that have a civic engagement component as a mandatory experience for students, which is excellent. But when we did that, what we did was we stopped tracking it because this is all self-reported data. So our students have to, after they have their experience, go into a database, enter their hours in, and then hopefully get it correct. So this is showing a brief glimpse of the impact that our students are having in the community, it's not showing the whole picture. So again, looking at ways that we actually track this information for our students and adding in our employees, because our employees have a wealth of community engagement experiences that we've never tracked before, and we should be showing the example to our students, we do this and you do this, and therefore as an institution, we're actually providing community this. That's something that we really need to focus on and aim for.
I think also this touches, Chair Bello, you've talked about the workforce piece and, you know, building our workforce programs and what we're doing, need to track our workforce and business partnerships and who's doing what and where, and so this is a part of that area that we'll be working on.
Along those, those lines, things are, partnerships with the high schools and the lower schools and those things, is that falling in community engagement?
I think it will in the future.
Okay.
And I think, let me, please just explain this to the rest of the board members. When we first started this strategic plan, we came up with five committees, and you see those on our monthly, so it's retention, recruitment, learning experience, financial, like vitality, and employee engagement. Well, when we really kind of made sense of our strategic plan and pushed them into the, into the pillars instead, which is really where they should be, you'll see that we're just going to start to combine different areas. So areas that were in retention are now going to support community engagement, areas that were in retention are going to support economic mobility, and they're kind of going to shift some of the members who have those highlights in their background into these new community areas, these new committees. But right now, those fall in recruitment. Any other questions I can share? Okay, let's look at our employee experience and engagement. We do have three priorities in this. You have heard us come and talk to you about the survey that we sent out, the areas that we need to focus on. We spent a little bit of time talking about during our African-American male initiative, a comparison of how we look from the county to our students, to our staff and our faculty. This is a slightly larger breakout for you to kind of get a sense of how do we compare to the community. It's a little complicated, so let me just walk you through it. On the left-hand side, this is the census data, the estimated census data for 2018, so it's the most recent data we have in Hales County census. And then we broke it down, and this is our, kind of our baseline comparison here, what do all of our employees look like, what do our full-time faculty look like, what are our full-time A&amp;P, so these are contracted salary employees, and what do our full-time career surveys for contracted hourly employees? And then we broke it down by all of the different ethnicities. We looked at how are our black employees doing, how are Hispanic employees doing, are white, and then all of their minorities, which is a smaller subset, combined together. And so what this is showing you is two things. In comparison to our, our county, our Hispanic population is not as well represented across the board, that's the red line that goes all the way across. And in regards to all of them, our full-time faculty are the ones that are not as representative of our, of our county. Just scroll to the next one, which is for 2018, 19, you're going to see that again, our Hispanic comparison is the one that is the least, that's across all categories of employees. You'll notice that we did show some increases for our full-time faculty in the black category, but we're still struggling with the other ones. So here's something interesting. In order for all of the other ethnicities to become green, our whites have to go down because you have a certain number of students, right? So if you're looking at this and you're saying, well Sabrina, this is 73.8, this is 71.1, that should be red because it's less, it's the opposite just for the white category because in order for us to increase in the other categories, the white category has to go down because that's our predominant base right now. Okay, our second priority has to do with expanding professional development. You actually see us come every month and talk a little bit about this, where we, we're talking about our full-time faculty who are engaged in professional development. We have had conversations on how do we increase this conversation to include all the rest of our employees and how do we track that, that's something that we need to add in. But you'll see right now, overall, we're doing a much better job of making sure that our faculty members have an opportunity to be engaged in professional development. And then our third one, which has to do with employee engagement and retention, so this one's a new one for us. We looked at how many, how many employees from a certain point in time, and we picked actually a specific point in time now that corresponds with another report that's a federal report that we can actually go back to and make sure that we're always in line, how many employees are either staying with us or have retired, which means they're still kind of staying with us, versus those that have left based over the base. So you'll see our baseline for 1718, we were at 88.5. As an 18 and 19, we were at 87. So we had a lot more employees who left. We do have a target of keeping our employees because once you make talent and keep talent, you want them to be here, we don't want to have, you know, all those awesome people walking over. So you can see that we're trying to get to that number.
Dr. Crawford, what is our number of full-time faculty total? I'm sorry. I just...
340. I knew it wasn't with threes.
No 40.
336 is a lot to write.
So if our 1396 touches...
Touches, how many times? And so we just started talking about, yes, so we just started talking about disaggregating about numbers. Rachel Bennett and I had a long conversation about can we figure out of those specific numbers, how many of those have gone? So it's not the same person who went to 100.
Right.
It's every person has been, always touched once. So disaggregate, in that way that's an excellent question.
So you said you looked at the federal numbers for retention, you know, with those bar?
That we report to the federals. We don't have a comparison. And the only, only employees that are not included in that are adjuncts. We didn't do adjuncts because adjuncts are more, or hourly.
I mean, is it too hard? I mean, not all turnover is bad turnover.
Not all turnover is bad turnover. You really don't want to be at 100% because that means you're not getting rid of things you need to do. We're not bringing in amazing new staff like we did this year, which are really positive additions to the... It's a brand-new metric, so please, if you're joining this group, let them know that, something that we just started looking at. Happy to change that.
But retention of employees, it's very important, and we, we want to keep all of our employees, especially, you know, those that are greatly productive and doing what needs to be done. And, and, you know, I've seen some walk out the door and some new ones come in, so we just want to make sure that we're keeping them. I've lost my voice from graduation, so please forgive me.
Other questions on the board? Okay, so in your booklet, the next, I'm not going to speak to these, but the financial vitality group has put together several metrics that really speak to not just what you see on a normal monthly basis, but very specific areas. And if you are interested in the financial vitality piece, they're willing to talk to you about this in the breakout groups, and talk about fund balances and other things, very specific metrics that kind of speak to the health and vitality of the institution.
Can I just, probably on that...
Can I just, probably on that, for our sake, this is something that Dr. Williams brought forward and said, and as you know, we've kind of changed our monthly reporting as well, through our meetings. She said, you know, we really need to look at how, what's the overall health of the college financially, not just are we meeting our budget each year? Because meeting our budget is all relative to where we set our budget. So these are metrics that Jeanette and Brian and their team have come up with to try to pull out what keeps them up at night, to know if we're achieving things. And so, I know we talked a little bit at the last board meeting about that, but I think this is an area where we're definitely going to want some input from the board as we move forward, looking at the strategic plan, and what we're looking at on a monthly basis to make us feel comfortable about the financial stability of the college, realistically.
I thought it was important for the board to get an overall view of health of the organization. I think that sometimes as we make decisions, we forget about the health insurance cost, and, you know, what do we have in reserves, and how can it be spent, and what are our next steps? And not just, you know, here's the revenue, here are the expenses. And so this is our first attempt of giving you that detail on the overall health of the college, where the money lies, how it's spent, where we get it from, and what our status is at this point. And we're in an outpatient. When we break into the groups, the Financial Vitality group will go through the detail on that.
That wraps up everything that I have to share for today. Any questions? I think the more important part is the conversation that you're about to have. Thank you. I wish you all had the power to at least get a job.
All right, so as you've gotten the progress overview in each of our five areas, trustee members, hopefully, one or more are really resonating with you in terms of an area that you feel strongly about, that you can add value to in the coming years as a champion. And we're going to go to page two of our agenda, and let's start with work group one, which would be academic excellence work group. Does this particular group resonate with anyone?
I believe Trustee Giddens had asked, he's not here this morning, but I believe, unless somebody would like to, somebody in attendance would like to say, I would like to be here instead, but he had expressed to Dr. Williams, he would like to be on that for the coming year.
Is this one? Trustee Giddens. How about work group two, economic mobility? Would this one resonate with anyone?
Should we, I was going to say, we could go around and choose the ones we want. Maybe that might be the.
Trustee Bello?
I think economic mobility, it's either that or community engagement.
I'm thinking perhaps it makes the most sense for me is to put Financial Vitality since I'm representing the board of faculty.
Okay, community engagement. Okay. And I'll take employee.
Oh, wow, that was easy. All right, so we have for economic mobility, Vice Chair Bello. And then for community engagement, trustee Kidwell. And then for financial vitality, trustee Stone Cypher. And then for employee experience, Chair Cole. That was so easy, no dance off. All right, what we're going to do next is we will deploy into these work groups, and before we deploy, you know, we want to be very clear with what you're going to do in the next 15, 20 minutes in these groups. And sometimes it's easiest to illustrate what you are not going to do. So I'll ask DJ, help me have this quick clip that will help you understand what is absolutely not going to happen when you go into your work groups.
Carol, schedule a staff meeting.
What's the topic?
I plan to fuse Six Sigma with Lean methods to eliminate the gap between our strategy and our objectives.
I'll just say, waste of time.
So no just by PowerPoint, no talking heads, no mumbo jumbo. We're really going to get to the meat of what are the priorities of your specific focus groups. Have great, rich conversations, very informal. Get to the bottom of what can you, as a trustee member, contribute to and add value to, please?
Before we break up, could you or Dr. Williams give us a recap of what these work groups have been doing the past couple, I mean, not specifically, but just why were they convening the overview so we know we're not, that way we're not wasting time?
The groups were convened to ensure that we moved our agendas forward, and that we made change on them, that we made improvements. We were meeting as an executive leadership council, and during those meetings, we would break into our five work groups. And the work groups would work on the specific tasks ahead. When we break into these work groups momentarily, the chair of that work group will give you an overview of, this is what we've been focusing on, here's our recommendations to hear from you with your questions, and get your feedback and input. But we've had a lot of calls, but we didn't attain them because we weren't monitoring them. So we put the work groups together to make sure that we were achieving and focusing on those goals.
All right, so let me get you all set up for success. So work group one, academic excellence. Trustee Giddens is assigned to that work group. It's going to be here. Thank you, Dr. Williams. And we're going to join these two tables. And you can see the team of champions. Dean Demers will be facilitating this particular work group, and you'll stay right here. And when you go to your work groups, you'll see the three priorities on a handwritten whiteboard, so you can kind of stay high level and know these are the key priorities our group is going to be focused on. You'll also see the team of champions. For economic mobility, we have Vice Chair Bello, and you will be going to the Forest Lab along with your team. Dr. Renard will be facilitating that with a team of champions. And you'll head out the exit, hang a left to the Forest Lab, and you'll find your teams there for economic mobility. Our community engagement work group is going to be in the Water Lab, and trustee Kidwell, you'll join up with your team. It will be facilitated by our new dean, Michael Ramsey, as well as Dean Joseph Smiley. And you'll head out this exit, hang a right to the Water Lab, and you'll find your group, your team of champions. Work group four, our Financial Vitality, we'll have Chair Stone, excuse me, trustee Stone Cypher, and you will join in the Beach Lab. You guys get to go to the beach today. You'll head out that door, hang a right into the Beach Lab. I don't know how to pick the right group. And you'll be joined with our co-facilitators, Brian Miles and Jesse Turtle, and a team of champions in the Beach Lab. You will be doing dueling work groups in the Beach Lab. And Chair Cole, as we also will invite you to go to the Beach Lab for work group five. And if you can scroll up just a tad, we'll have Jackie Skrid as your facilitator for that group, and another great team of champions in the corner of the Beach Lab. We'll give you about 15, actually, we have a little bit more time if we'd like to spend a little more in-depth time, maybe a half an hour, really digging into the work groups and understanding, so that you can then come back. We'll reconvene a little bit before 11:00. We'll ask each board member to share which priority are you most excited about for 2020? So, you know how much time is available? Next one. All right, enjoy. Thank you. Any other highlights from our academic achievement?
Well, we just realized how very many projects we have going on, so we need to take a little inventory so that we can share those with you and decide to move on to which.
Well done. Let's hear it for our academic excellence work group. Let's go on to our economic mobility work group. You all were in the Forest Lab. Dr. Pat Renard was facilitating, and we had Vice Chair Bello as our champion of the role for economic mobility. Vice Chair, would you like to share some specific priorities that you might have wrapped your head and heart around in terms of 2020s?
Sure. Well, it was fun to hear what they had been doing so far. Most of you have known me since the day I got here, I think it was in 2012, whatever. This has been something that I've been focused on, and that I really think we have an opportunity. Had some great strategies. We talked about maybe too many strategies, and maybe too many in not necessarily the right places. You know, 21 with high school students, when that's something that we excel at, and we should probably deploy 21 strategies to workforce instead. So that was my two cents. We talked about some of the certifications that somebody with an AS degree can earn, and how we could build on that, because obviously that's growing. Talked about some LinkedIn campaigns specifically targeting people who've had their AS degrees. I happen to be aware of a university that just opened in Ruskin that's post-baccalaureate nursing degrees, that they didn't seem to know was there. And I think we could do a similar kind of youth program. They could feed us the ones who don't have baccalaureate, and we could feed them next. We talked about a very brave campaign, which you may veto. Rita kind of sucked her breath in when I said it. But preparing people, reminding people what 2008 and 2009 were like, and suggesting that they start preparing now. We all know it's coming, and why wait until it happens, right? We talked about the need for a CRM system that crosses workforce and marketing and recruiting. Apparently, we don't have that, and all that information is not being captured in one place. We all know what big data means to business these days, and how important that is. So I think that's something that we should be looking at. We talked about being brave again, and going after students in Pasco and Hillsborough, where they're not offering baccalaureate degrees. Why aren't we, right? They're probably more likely to come to an SBC. USF's getting harder to get into, so we feel like there's an opportunity there. And I had specific strategy conversation around, instead of sending all of these employers that I talked to, to Dr. Williams, who might be as busy as me, or maybe even a little bit more, that I'm going to start sending them to the recruiting team instead, and they can go after them directly. So that could potentially have an almost immediate impact. One of the examples I gave was an engineering firm that told me, this big, big engineering firm in downtown St. Pete, that said, USF grads can't read blueprints. I can't recruit from USF because they don't know how to read blueprints. And he just came up to me and said, we have a blueprint reading class. And I'm like, well, they don't know that. So I think there's a lot of opportunity from a driving enrollment perspective. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bello?
Developing new programs?
Driving enrollment growth and expand educational choices. Well done, economic mobility working group. Let's move over to the community engagement group. You all were in the Water Lab, and we have trustee Kidwell, who is doing that mission. And we had Dean Ramsey and Dean Smiley, who are the facilitators of that group. Trustee Kidwell, can you please share your top priority?
Yes, I think I can. We had a very lively group and discussion. I would say the main thing that came out of it, there's certain bullet points. We are very under-reported in our community engagement, in all regards, from faculty all the way down to students. And basically, we're not capturing all the hours that we're reporting. And that goes, you know, to the collegiate high school as well. So the data is flawed, all the stuff that we're reporting is flawed, because a lot of it is under-reported. So nobody's reported. So there's an accountability there that we talked about. Maybe, we talked about a resource realignment, trying to incentivize everybody in various ways to basically have a system in place where we report all of this stuff. Service learning as part of the curriculum. There's a 7% to 10% higher success rate when service learning is part of the curriculum. We have applied as a college for the gold standard, and Dean Smiley has given me the application that I'll look through, but I haven't, you know, my understanding is we've applied to achieve the gold standard in this regard, and we should find out soon. But we're hopeful and maybe even thinking that we will achieve that. Incentives such as listing what these students are doing on their transcripts, as well as graduation courts, which apparently are really huge deals, and, you know, students are looking for ways to kind of get more courts. There's different ways to incentivize this. We need to do better as a college with a branding statement, because when we are involved in the community, there's more internships available with the business community, and frankly, more jobs available as well. Trying to think what else. The athletics program. When they're involved in the community, and I didn't know this, but they are heavily involved, that helps in recruitment and retention, and the athletes that generally play their sport all the way through and have graduated. So every kind of aspect of the college can be involved in this. I think I hit everything, but I don't know, did I miss anything?
Let's hear it for our community engagement. Moving to the Beach Lab.
What's our top priority?
Of the three, what was her? Well, there really is one that has been called out.
Only one. But that's the only one we had data for.
Okay.
So these would be the three.
I think number three would be the priority, because it could lead to increasing.
It will lead to increasing our effectiveness.
Yeah, I think number three would be the priority, because it can lead to, you know, better results in the other two, and basically everything else. So if we can promote civic leadership, I think it brings great results in all regards to the college, to the students, the faculty, high school.
All right, so let's move then to the Beach Lab, where we have our Financial Vitality working room, and trustee Stone Cypher is our champion, and we had Brian Miles and Jesse Turtle as our facilitators.
Thank you. We had a great group as well. Thank you to Brian and Jesse for spearheading that and leading it. It's interesting to see where we've come the last four years, at least since I've been on the board. And talking about Financial Vitality is a little bit more exciting now, because we're in a better position than we were before. And a lot of that is due to the very, very hard work that everyone across the spectrum at St. Pete College has put in, to make sure that we're back on stable ground and a firm foundation to move into the future. But especially Brian and Jeanette, the hours and hours and hours that they've put in to make sure our budget is right-sized. So thank you all for that, again. So it's encouraging to be talking about things like efficiencies, rather than what deep cuts we need to make to move forward. And that's really where we're at now. We went through a lot of different benchmarks, but I think the one I was most excited about was talking about our surplus margins, and what does it look like from an efficiency standpoint? Yeah, it was number 10, the last one. You can see as it's brought up here, in 2014, 15, and 15, 16, things were.
things were getting a little skewed. And we have moved back in the right direction to actually leave ourselves a gap and some surplus so that we can be flexible with what we do and we can be more stable going forward. So we need to always keep this, I think, at the forefront of what we're doing. Not ever sacrificing what we offer our students and also not sacrificing the experience for our employees here, but walking that fine line and finding where that is where we can be the absolute most efficient we can and still be successful with what we're doing. So it's actually kind of fun to be looking at things like that right now and getting more detailed with what we do. But all that being said, the largest priorities for me and what I think was the case for everyone in the room was to make sure we focus in the upcoming year on increasing our non-state funding streams and diversifying our resources. I think we need to always be focused on how we can be more self-sufficient as an institution, not necessarily depending so much on state funding and even on enrollment to make or break us. There's a lot of creative ways that we can go out and make sure that we have a diversity of funds coming into our institution. And I think we have some good ideas moving forward on how we can get there. And then secondly, the second priority is to continue to look at how we can maximize our space utilization and facility alignment. We're already doing that. This has been in the works for two and a half years at least. I think we're making some really, really strong strategic moves right now based on what we're finding out from some of these different types of analysis we're doing. But we need to keep looking at that. And that, again, all goes back to being more efficient as a college. So those are the top two for us.
Let's hear it for Financial Vitality. It's already so obvious that our working groups are stronger because we have you as a champion, our board member. So thank you. And now we're to our final working group, the Employee Engagement and Experience Working Group, Chair Cole.
Sure. We had a really good discussion about all of the things that this group is doing. And much like many of the other areas, each of the three top priorities feed into one another. And it's very much so, it's a symbiotic relationship. So we spent a lot of time speaking about professional development and the amount of expense that incurs to the college, but how to provide other opportunities for employee engagement and professional development that might not cost a significant amount of dollars. Down to the details of, right now, there's basically a professional development stipend. You know, is that the best thing to do? Should it be department-wide dollars that then are distributed by a dean or a department head? Or is it better to have a professional development budget that maybe there's a competitive application process for a portion of it? So there's a lot of ways to spend that money. We also, one of the priorities with respect to equity and diversity is increasing diversity in the workplace. And one of the things at the board level and with Dr. Williams we've been discussing is the hiring of an inclusion officer or some sort of diversity officer. And then ensuring engagement and retention. And I asked the very pointed question, okay, so if you have $150,000, is that money going to be used to hire one person who's going to look at diversity and inclusion? Or is that money going to go into a pot that perhaps several people can draw from to spend money on professional development that reinforces diversity and inclusion? And because that's really for us, the five of us at the end of the day, that's why we are prioritizing these things, is to say, when you all collectively, as the college team, do the budget, where are those dollars going to go? And I think we landed at, our number one priority would be to ensure the engagement and retention because that would be through these professional development opportunities. I think the group felt strongly that the diversity and inclusion is going to best be achieved at the college through a grounds-up and boots-on-the-ground type of work. And so how do we do that? That doesn't mean there shouldn't be one person responsible for that, making sure boots-on-the-ground are facilitating that. But the actual engagement of the employees. And that way, it goes across all of the service, staff, faculty, adjunct, everyone. And so really, it's a challenge of how do we best engage our employees through recognition, through professional development opportunities, and making sure that we are diverse and inclusive. So that's the number one priority. And I commend this group because I think they have a really hard job before them to figure out what the best ways to encourage that engagement is going to be. Did I do an okay job, Rebecca? Okay.
And let's hear it for the Employee Engagement Experience Working Group. In fact, we have completed the mission we were called to do today. Financial Vitality, so well done.
Wonderful. So I think, as Andrea just said, eight minutes early. So thank you all for your good work and for being here today. And thank you for your work all year. I think as Trustee Stone Cypher said, over the past three years since I've been on the board, we've really seen a seismic shift financially in colleges' financial stability. And we spent the first two years kind of of my service hearing about these very deep cuts that negatively impacted all of these other priorities because it's hard to keep employees engaged and retained when you're cutting $10 million out of the budget. And we recognize that, and we appreciate each and every one of your leadership as part of this executive team, going back to your departments and your staff and your colleagues. And hopefully, you can be proud of the work that we're doing because we are certainly proud of the work you all are doing and every single day. So thank you for a wonderful 2019. I know everyone is looking forward to the holiday break this week at Kian. And I hope you all can get some rest, rejuvenate, and we look forward to a wonderful 2020 with each of you. So thank you.
Before we leave, I definitely want to thank the Board of Trustees, the time that you have put into reviewing all of this data and giving us very good feedback. I want to thank Chair Cole, who has dumpster-dive with me through all of this for the last couple of weeks. And I also want to thank the Foundation. Mike, I really value you and your leadership. You have been amazing. Steve, you're my buddy in everything. I'm glad you're coming. Mr. Warsaw, thank you for being here and for staying here with us. Also, when we have our meetings with the Foundation, you guys have just been amazing. And so we could not do what we're doing without you. And I just needed to make sure that you receive public, you know, recognition for the work you've done. And to my team, you guys rock, and you know it. And I'm so grateful to you for the work that you have done in '19. I hope that you really and truly enjoy your winter break, get some family and fun time, because come January 6th is on. Thank you again for everything you've done. And thank you to those who came to graduation. I really appreciate you being there as well. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.